Less per student from Exeter than spending $2,039.31 more per student from Antietam, while seeing no total decrease in the expenditures is a benefit to outside of the city residents. I also asked of the board if they would respond because last meeting I gave out a spreadsheet showing that our funds would be decreased by 24% in the reserve. I would like to thank the four people that did respond to me and I would ask for a show of hands of those people that think on the board that losing 24% of our reserve fund...
I would like your comments, I mean actually can hear your comments, but the board is not here to respond.
Thank you, I apologize for asking that question. Okay, so let's go to the education. Right now in every survey that I look at, I have to find anything where Antietam does not score as high as Exeter. So I look at them and say, well, test scores are may in effect of opportunity or of actual ability. The problem is, at this point, we have no way of telling. So if we merge the two districts together, we're not sure whether this will actually hurt our kids' education or whether it will help. There is no way to quantify that. However, the fact that you can't say it will help makes you say that, well, wait a second, we know it's not going to improve. So my question isn't, again, I can't ask, never mind. So that brings me to the last thing that everybody keeps on talking about, and this is the one I really struggle with. That's the moral obligation. Is it fair that one group of kids gets access to more than another? While I don't think it's fair, we are not going to change the system. Let's start locally. In the last meeting, it was argued that forcing a kid to spend money on getting two and taking the AP test would be a burden. If we extend that thinking to the Red and Needle, they have for years had service on the internet for free. They decided they wanted to make more money and have eliminated much of this free service. Is it fair for one of the poorest cities in the United States to have to pay for something that's paid for by our own neighborhood? Where is the morals of the paper? Where is there helping out the neighbor? If we go up to the state level, Pennsylvania is one of the only states that's not tax fracking. If we were to tax fracking and use that money to education, why yes, as somebody pointed out, that tax wouldn't pass more into consumer. That consumer base is spread out. Some of that natural gas goes to other states, so those other states would actually be paying for our children's educations. Let's look at the state pensions. Everyone knows that pension obligations killing all of the school districts and all levels of government. Have the unions representing these people looked at the big picture, or are they only looking out for themselves? Morally, everyone knows this model is not sustainable, yet it has changes. Do these unions have a moral obligation to do what is right for our kids' education, even if it means they must sacrifice? Let's go another step up to federal government. Is it morally right that we pay farmers not to grow crops while people are starving? Is it right we send billions and billions of dollars overseas while people are homeless? Is it right that we have no child left behind without adequate funding? We have been told that God is not allowed to be part of education. Personally, I believe that God is where mortals start, and if we are not going to be able to change the way everything is done, then standing up and taking the very correct path will be the downfall of Exeter. Thank you all for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for talking. I did not announce prior to the public speaking, there is in the policies a three-minute limit on speed. There's so many people here tonight, I don't want, I'd like to reply by that this evening so there's as many people as possible here to talk.
Hello, Robert Beckdahl from West Emerson Road in Exeter. One thing I think this board has overlooked is the fact that I've gotten two bail-ins from two charter schools addressed to me and my son in the last week. In my opinion, you're opening the door for these people to come in and poach students away from Exeter. There's a meeting on the 28th of my missing, uh, of the one missing, to come out and learn how the charter schools work. Also, if anyone here wants to help the people in Antietam, I suggest they get their checkbook, write a check, send it to the school board, I'm sure they'll have some.
I'm Lisa Wilder, I'm at Six Taylor Drive, right down the street from the school. I appreciate the public service you all do. I know that you're here to actually help the students for the amount of time that you put into your school board work, and I appreciate that. And with that in mind, I can see why the school boards of Antietam and Exeter are talking to each other. It's a creative way of thinking about ways to try and help and solve a problem. But there's some reasons why I want to express the difficulties with the merger. Imagine you have two swimmers, they're out in some deep water, they've gotten themselves into a little bit of a situation, but they're swimmers and they're okay, but they know this situation has to improve, right? And there's different ways they could help each other out. One of the ways they could do it is to tie themselves together, right? That's kind of like the merger, that they could say, we're going to tie ourselves together and we're going to stay together as we go into shore. The difficulty is, the state is telling you how you can tie yourselves together. They're telling you to tie your arm behind your back, that's the lost revenues coming in from Antietam School District because of the lower military. They're telling you to stick some rocks in your pockets, right? Those rocks are things that you can't do anything about, things like the increased contractual obligations that are built into the system with the merger, things about busing and disruption of pupils and changes in class size and crowded. And these are rocks, again, that because of the way the merger's going forward, they're being imposed from the outside, just like a lot of the problems you're trying to deal with have been. So I ask you instead to think about other ways that you can help each other without tying your hands together with the state formal merger process. Ways that you can look at the rocks that you've got and make your own decisions about them, ways that you can share the load and help each other, but not necessarily say that all shared services are good services. You have to put the same sort of careful evaluation into if a shared service is worth it as you're putting into a merger, right? In what ways will the districts benefit, in what ways is it going to cost us, and how could we price that out? You have the ability to do that. But if you go to a full merger, a lot of things are already decided for you about how this process has to work. And again, the, why are you in the deep water? Well, or you think the state's going to come and try and bail you out of that? Some of those problems that you're in are because of the way we fund education and the way we push the burden back onto the local districts. So again, I encourage you to think hard about those shared services, and I encourage everyone who's here, as well as every resident of Berks County, whether their kid goes blind missing or reading or anything in between, to be approaching the problem in the way it really needs to be, and that is to talk about the inequality in educational opportunity that's being provided in Pennsylvania. By the way, we have structured our tax policies, we see schools that are left to do the best that they can, and for some schools, that's perfectly okay, and for a lot of schools, it's not. It's not up to us to solve that problem, not especially with a formal merger, where the choices are so limited and the numbers are so clearly against a successful merger. Instead, I encourage you to work together to find other ways. Thank you.
Good evening, Louise Swartley, 31 Traxel Road. I'd like to thank the school board for giving the opportunity to speak and give opinions. What I would like to say, I believe all of you already know, you're elected officials and we're your constituents. By law, I believe you have to listen to us and take that very...
...national or professional has taken entrance tests as part of their employment. If they wish to move forward, they take a test. I've thought about this long and hard as I drive around the highways and bylaws during the food my job. And the best analogy I can come up with is the lawyer. A lawyer can study for I don't know how many years, eight years, to become a lawyer, and he could be the best here to be the best studied lawyer, but if he or she can't pass the bar exam, he's simply not going to be a lawyer. I think in our society, we've been lowering standards and lowering standards. We need to raise standards again. This is one of the reasons we're falling behind on the global market, is we're lowering our acceptance standards. We need to go back up. That's my thoughts on that testing. Regarding the financial impact of it, these students that are in this position to take this test are driven students. They want to move forward, they want to do, they have their plan in life relatively laid out. If they're so driven for that, I'm sure they'll be driven to come up with the, I believe it was $89 fee for this test. If there's a situation, in a true situation, where a child cannot come up, the family cannot come up with that money, if you look around the room, there's a lot of people here that are apparently interested in this community, in this society. I'm sure somewhere, $89 will be come up somewhere. This is an investment, this is a direct investment into the community of $89. Come on, there's, those of us that go out to dinner and spend $89, or in the bar and having a drink, come on. It's the truth, I'm an ivory. On the topic of the merger, look around again, look at the people in the room. Of anything else, this has been excellent in the sense of, look at the people that are interested in taking a direct interest in the local affairs in their community. You don't see this in every community. This is important. I'm not going to talk about the merger. Last meeting, we had a, I believe, a correct, without drawing, there was a majority of the board members who made a public statement that they would vote against it. We have more turnout of people tonight. Please make the decision based on honor, integrity, and duty. Thank you.
Glenn Phillips, Hunter Boulevard. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. We elect you, do not ignore your fiduciary responsibility to this community. Thank you.
I'm, no, I'm not supposed to ask the question, but I'm concerned that, you know, you guys talked last week about, you kind of gave us an idea of where you stood, most of you did. There were four, to me, anyway, seemed like definite nos. There were three definite yeses, and there were two that I was, I felt ambiguous, okay? So let me see, close vote. Mr. Dziger is here, and I'm wondering, you know, you got eight people, what would happen if it's four and four? Or is he, how's that handled?
The board policies allow members to vote by telephone when they're not available. Prior to the vote on the merger, Mr. Dziger will be called and he will vote by telephone.
Okay. I thought they had, I know you have a phone policy, but I thought they had to be, like, connected to the, will you have a discussion about it, whatever? He's going to be part of, I mean, he'd be there, available, he'll hear what you're saying? Okay. The two ambiguous that I thought were ambiguous last week were Mr. Brady, because he said he wasn't for a full merger, he didn't want a full merger, but he liked the idea of a regional school model. And I, you know, I don't know what that means, so I don't have any idea who Mr. Brady's going to vote. And my other one was Mr. Dziger, who stated that, he stated here last week, that he's not going to shove this idea down the throats of the people. But then in the Southern Berks newspaper, the past edition, he was quoted, he said, for the district of Exeter, Dziger strongly supports the merger of Exeter with Antietam School District, getting asked for the past 10 years. So on the one hand, he's sitting in a meeting, a public meeting, and saying, I'm going to shove it down anybody's throat, and then it agrees, he's going forward, so that's questionable. Mr. Quinter has stated all along, and he seems to be for the merger for sure, and all along, he's saying that he's definitely for the merger, but only if there's not a negative impact for the students or for the taxpayers. Yet according to a statement that was made by Tim Chmera last week, I believe, I heard it somewhere, and it was also in the paper, and he's a finance guy, so he knows these things, okay? He says, when you aggregate the two districts, the cost of the combined entity actually goes up. You have revenues going down and expenses going up. So to me, that sounds like it would be a disadvantage to the taxpayers. And as far as the students go, you know, he said it wouldn't go forward if it was not good for the taxpayers or the students, as far as the students go. They just move, you know, they close Loush and move them down to the water creek. People have been moved around, and the merger would mean more moving kids, maybe doing redistricting, doing busing, changing, maybe teachers from building to building. It just seems like a really, really humongous disruption to the program. For the advantage, I still haven't heard what the advantages are exactly, but you know, if there is an advantage, it just seems like, whatever small advantage there might be, it can't compare to the problem and the disruption to the program. So for those reasons, for the taxpayers and for the students, I'm just hoping that you will vote against it. I know you will all vote against it, but I'm hoping that the vote will be against it. Thank you.
My name is Todd LaFosse, I live at 1321 Vineland Road in Exeter Township. Strikes me that a merger is like getting married. I've been working at mine for 40-plus years, still working at it. In the long run, your taxes are going to go up. It doesn't matter what we say, what we do, school boards will raise taxes, your property assessors will go up, you will pay for it. That's a given. It's just like dining. However, in the long run, I think a merger makes sense, because ultimately, you will see savings, not in short term, not in transition, but it's like buying a house. You pay a lot of down money to get that bank to say yes, and then, after many years, you recoup your investment. And I would add one thing. If you think the current system of 500-plus schools in Pennsylvania is going to continue, wait until the state of Pennsylvania shoves merger down your throats. Or do it, or we do it ourselves, and we do it now, and show them how it's done.
My name is Louis Vaughn, 4217 San Marcos Avenue. One thing I just wanted to bring up is about the occupancy in a high school.
If we merger, there's one thing you cannot pass on the fire code. I know that Pennsylvania Department of Education high schools, like you were saying, term labs in the classroom, so many, there's a footprint, and you cannot, no matter what, go pass the national fire code, or even Pennsylvania's fire code. What my point is, is when, if we do merger, the properties in Antietam are going to be selling more, they're going to be more enticing, which is going to accelerate the population of students. And at the long run, what I'm looking at, the lower level of elementarys, you do have a room of these kids, they're all going to go to the high school, that's going to make it grow. And what happens is, then you're going to have to expand, that's a lot of money. No matter what you say, that's going to be, that's going to be the future. We're just accelerating by doing this. We want to keep this small. I moved into Exeter, love it, and another point is, the classrooms are pretty full now, my kids tell me all the time. Adding more students and taking away labs and all that is always taking away from the education. Another thing is, the point is, did you ask the opinions of the teachers? They're the ones, the front leaders in this whole thing too. I know we're all about taxes and all that, but one thing is, you start getting so big, just look at Red High. I grew up in the went to Red High. It's a disaster. That's going to be, if you're going to put, like, say, Antietam High School, use that in another school, you're going to have to get more upper levels, and we're going to be taking away teachers. My point is, is you're going to accelerate the expansion of Exeter High School. That means a lot more money. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
My name is Suresh Kagnupu, I'm from 4915 Anaheim Drive, and a lot of people talk about a lot of issues here, with respect to property taxes and the teachers, but the main thing that we should be concerned about the merger is our children. We want to give them a good education without any major interruption or disruption, and this merger is going to be a big catastrophic effect to our children. So ask our children, what do they say? They say no to merger.
I don't have any children in this district, so I don't really have a dog in the fight as far as the educational portion of this goes, but I follow the finances and other issues in this township pretty closely, and this seems more about us bailing out the state than bailing out the neighbors. I've been told, coming to budget meetings and other things in this township, that we have 500 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania, and all 500 of them are in trouble. It's time that somebody at the state level starts looking at what to do to fix our education and not dump it on these small communities. I have strong sympathy for our neighbors. Everybody wants all of our kids to be educated well. We know that Exeter Township has a tax issue, it's only going to increase at the municipal level, at the school district level, at the county level. We can't keep bailing out the state, and I'm asking you to help us. And I've stood at this podium many times in the past and asked the same question. I come to you and I ask you, what are the mandates? You guys always tell us, it's mandates. The state passes down mandates to us. So I go to town hall meetings where Representative Cox and other ones are there talking about 1776 and other laws, and I ask them, what are the mandates? Well, do you have committees that determine what the cost of those are? No, we rely on our school districts to do that. So I get on the phone and I call members of the school district and I ask them, can you tell me what the cost is? And everybody tells me they can't do that. We need your help, and I'm asking you, for the community, to stop bailing out the state. Let them help figure out what the problem in ours, in this district, in that district, and all 500 districts are.
My name is Hunter Aaron Zine, I live at 505 O'Leary Turnpike Road. I was just wondering if the board could confirm something that I had heard. If the state were to force us to merge, is it true that we would have to take on all of Antietam students, but we wouldn't be able to receive any of their property?
I have no idea. Under the law, the state cannot force two districts to move, that's all they have to merge. All they have to do is rest on the law, though. They can't decertify high schools, so they could come in and say that Chippewa High School no longer exists. Other than that, there's no way of guessing.
Great, thank you.
I thank you all for your comments. We will now move on to the meeting. We have a recommendation to establish an executive compensation committee. We have a recommendation to form an executive committee compensation committee headed by Mr. Chapina, Mr. Staub and Dr. Bender as members. The responsibility of this committee would be to review the current salaries of any executive personnel, make recommendations regarding the future salaries, and to study and let new contracts with those personnel. Since boards are, since committees are, the board as a whole, I would entertain a motion to form such a committee.
So, please.
A motion, a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no.
Could you tell me, is this going to be a standing committee, or is it just going to be as needed?
Be a standing committee.
So they will be working all year long on this?
On a required basis, anytime a contract comes up over new or anything like that, they'll be negotiating that.
Don't you think this should have gone under the personnel committee here?
The motion is on the table.
I'm asking a question.
This discussion with the board as a whole, about 30 minutes ago, perhaps you weren't there.
I'd like, excuse me, if I could address that, please. We did have a long discussion as it related to executive compensation, which is the senior leadership in district. It wasn't clear to those of us on the board what process we'd go through to look at administrative performance and determine salaries based on that performance. One of the things that we did through our recent process in looking at executive salaries, one of the things that we noticed, for instance, was that Dr. Martin started on the same day, in the same year, as a superintendent of the Hamburg School District, and running a district twice her size six years later, she made $13,000 a year less than that superintendent. I personally had a problem with that, and I thought that was a board of oversight to not stay on top of executive salaries in this district. Further, I have a daughter, and I was very much bothered by the fact that three out of her four top administrators who are female were paid under market. So I felt it was important, and I lobbied the board to try to put a formal process in place, in which we would look at, on a regular basis, executive compensation based on performance to ensure that we were paying salaries that were fair in this market. As our administration decides to retire and we try to bring new talent into this district, we're going to have to pay for that talent. So one way or another, we needed to address it. That was my push, trying to get this issue addressed.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. We have a motion and a second, form a executive compensation committee. Call in favor, who's in the case of a same act.
Aye.
Motion. Motion carries.
Abstention, please.
Why would there be an abstention, ma'am?
Because I asked a question, I didn't get an answer.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. We also have two sets of minutes for approval. Do we have any, may I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Seven.
We have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please adopt the treacherous report, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report?
I move the treasurer's report as known in law attachment I V.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please adopt the treasurer's report, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board policy, we have two policies which are for the second meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval at this time.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion on either policy 001 or 113.5. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the policy, that's submitted, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Policy group approved. There's this motion, it's Mrs. Staub.
I move that the board of school directors approve the audit services of Ransfield Hudson Leisure for the Exeter Tax Collector for the period 2013 through 2015. The professional fee to perform the annual audit will be $4,200 each year, and be shared equally by the Exeter Township School District and the Township of Exeter. The fee represents an annual increase of $100 per year, and that's an attachment 6E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving RKL as the audit services, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve a comprehensive service agreement with CSI for the support of the Want Student Telephone and Roll and Intercom Clock Systems for seven district buildings for the period June 1st, 2014 through May 31st, 2015, at a cost of $19,584. This is the same compston as the current agreement.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion? All in favor of the maintenance contract is submitted, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Reporting that the Pennsylvania Department of Education has approved Plan Con R-K, project refinancing of issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2014 to advance refund a portion of general obligation bonds, Series 8 of 2009, Series C of 2009, Series of 2010, and fund capital projects. Temporary reimbursement rate is 11.48%, and that's an attachment 6C. To explain that to the layman, we will be receiving about, I believe it's about $800,000 back from the state over a term, and about 15 years, about 15 years. So we'll receive that as a reimbursement from the state, that'll be able to come back to us. So again, we are just recompensating. I move that the board of school directors authorize the district superintendent to execute an alternative education program agreement with Antietam School District, which will be in effect until June 30th, 2014. The alternative education services are for an Exeter Township School District student at a rate of $55 per day.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please, in the old, in the school, placing the student in the old, turn that program in Antietam, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
I move that the board of school directors approve budget transfers for the month of March 2014 in the amount of $17,864. That's an attachment 6E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Excuse me, Dr., can you tell me why we have so much transfers to, from, to the speech department? It's like over $6,000, it's like that? From learning support to speech?
No, I, I don't know. No. They come to the transfer, they just follow it.
So again, it's more of an accounting entry, if you get down here.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the budget transfers, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve a merger between the Exeter Township School District and the Antietam School District.
Do I have a second?
No.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Will you please, Mark? I will, I will handle the meeting, sir. I don't need your help, thank you. We have you on the whole one for us. We have a motion and a second. I've been asked by members of the board to have the solicitor explain the significance of the vote, or the, anyone voting in assent or dissent of the motion. So, John, would you please explain that?
Are you saying if there would be a motion to reconsider at a later time?
Correct.
If the motion was passed or not passed, the only group that could bring it back for reconsideration would be a member of the prevailing vote. But I think that we're really premature in that, we really have to have a vote and see if anyone would be making that type of motion.
Thanks, sir. I'd also like to announce Mr. Deeser is on the line and listening to this.
Mr. Mossley? I'd like to ask you a question. Mr. Mossley?
I'm sorry.
I might ask you a question. It says, it is recommended, and in the next, in the G, it says it is resolved. So is there a difference between saying recommended or resolved?
No, I think that these.
My understanding is the intent would be the same, that by custom, oftentimes resolutions by the school board come under the term recommended, sometimes if the request solicitor that has resolved. I actually didn't write this, but it looks like I could probably.
First of all, we're not on that motion. When I read it, I would not have the word resolved in it. So that, that would be the official, just, just so you know. Normally, when Mr. Mossley does write it, he puts the word in resolve, I would then change it. So, just sharing that information with you. But as far as we have, it is on the table, I will, again, as I stated before, I will be voting against a full merger, based on.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you being here, but this is a business meeting. If you're going to interrupt it, if you're going to interrupt it, I'll just adjourn it and we'll reconvene some other time. Do you understand?
We're. One of the most arrogant thing I have.
Folks?
How can you vote? How can you vote at the bottom of the public party? How can you vote?
Sorry, you have not been recognized. Joe, go ahead.
Well, again, as we were saying, folks, if you could, if you could just allow us to speak, seriously, but again, from an economic standpoint, from a disruption to the student and of course uncertainty down the road, that's the reason that I'm going to be voting against it. However, I am in support of us looking into, into share, any type of, that we can share with the neighboring district without a full merger.
I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion. It will change several words in the motion. I'm going to distribute the mo, the amendment to the board members, and I'll read it so I'll read the amendment, and all the board members now in front of them, and wait for a second. If, if, if the amendment fails to get a second, then it will go away. It is recommended that school, the board of school directors now approve at this time the merger option between the Exeter Township School District and the Antietam School District. That's my amendment.
Amendment has been opposed, and we have a second. We have a second. We will now be discussing the amendment. Any discussion? And is there any discussion on the board?
Excuse me, I think I will speak against this amendment, and I'm going to be voting against it because I think the people came here tonight to see an end to this, either an end or a failure.
I'd just like to offer clarification for what's occurring right now. Typically, motion comes on board, that point in the second, and you go to the discussion. If amendments are put forth, they're put forth at that point for second, then we will vote on the amendment. If the amendment is aye, then it will then become part of the initial motion. If it is then turned away, it'll go back to the initial motion, which will continue discussion, and at that point, we will vote on the initial buildup for the particular motion that we put forward.
Is there any discussion on that?
David, can I just get some clarification as to what we're trying to accomplish with this, and I think the concern would be not approve at this time? Again, please just.
Joe, I mentioned last time that I felt we hadn't examined all the possibilities. Nothing has changed since last week. In fact, the combined board, or a committee that was formed between Exeter and the Antietam School District has not met to discuss the report. I said there, I think there are numerous ways we can address concerns of the community and proceed to really examine this in more detail. I never saw the envision that the financial report we received from the business managers was really a final document.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to talk, please. Well, I, I realize that we rely on our financial manager to develop our $67 million budget every year, so I don't understand why the numbers that she put together were not acceptable. And I think that having the issue go to vote tonight made sense in the absence of any additional information coming forward. After last week's meeting, I had occasion to run into the entire Berks State delegation at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast on Friday in Redding, and none of the elected officials I spoke with had any specifics on the state funds that were alluded to at our last board meeting. That was the last missing piece to bringing this to a vote. So here we are today. This has been an extensive process, and for me, it was easy to reach a conclusion, as I based my position solely on using the criteria that the board set forth at the very start of this process, and that was that a merger would not cause undue financial stress on the residents of Exeter, and that a result of a full merger would offer improved educational opportunity for all students. Simply put, the board's own criteria did not pass muster during the due diligence. Now, let me, let me be clear, let me be clear. I'm a big boy, and I was able to reach that conclusion on my own. I greatly appreciate the community's involvement in this process, but any person that concludes that I, or any of us, were forced to vote in a particular way is simply in denial that some of us were able to reach an opposite conclusion. Each board member, regardless of how they vote, should be respected for the effort that they've put in to this process. So after this, sorry, Bob, I have another minute or two, if you indulge me. I have deep respect for Mr. Quinter. I know that he's been trashed quite a bit through this process, but just remember, the district that you're passionate about today, he's had a big hand in building. So, after this vote this evening, we move forward. If the vote is to approve a merger, if the vote is to approve a merger, I will pledge to do my utmost to provide both districts with the leadership and involvement that will be necessary to make this a success until a new combined school board can be elected. However, if a merger is not approved, we should not continue the mistakes of the past and just let the issue of collaboration sit idle for 20 years until it comes up again. If there is a no vote, and the board approves the motion to pursue shared services, I will beat the drum to first have Antietam fully commit to pursuing shared services. Then I will do all that I can to push our board and our district leadership to work together to find and execute those opportunities. In this way, we keep our hand extended to our neighbor, and it becomes their decision as to whether or not they grasp it.
Is there any further discussion on Dr. Bender's amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the amendment, which reads, "It is recommended that board of school directors not approve at this time the merger option between the Exeter Township School District and the Antietam School District." Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. All right, let's review the vote, Paul, please.
Dr. Bender?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Brayley?
No.
Mr. Deesey?
No.
Mr. Jupinah?
No.
Mrs. Cutcher?
Yes.
Mr. Staub?
No.
Mr. Doctor Tormor?
No.
Mr. Quinter?
No. Now, entertain discussion on the base proposal that the board of school directors approve merger between the- merger between the Exeter Township School District and the Antietam School District, we have a motion and a second discussion.
I would like to make some comments. Last week, I did not comment because I wanted to listen to what the people had said and absorb what they were saying. This is how I feel about this situation. Since public schools belong to we the people, upon taking office, every board member repeats the following: "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth with fidelity, loyalty, and faithfulness and trustworthiness. It's a promise that I and every member on this board made to the citizens of the community that elected them. Public schools belong to we the people. They mirror the values we hold as members of a democratic society, a government of the people, for the people, and by the people. These ideals are written in our founding documents of the United States Constitution and the Pennsylvania Constitution, equality for all under the law regardless of race, religion, educational abilities, and financial circumstances. As we know, public education is the institution charged with preserving and strengthening our democracy. Thomas Jefferson understood that if the great experiment were to endure and flourish, it needed the public to be educated so that government of the people and for the people and by the people would not perish on this land. That is why we Americans spend our time, talent, and treasure to support universal education for all its citizens. Democracy and the quality of life for us, our children, and our future generations depend on strong support for public schools. That said, I cannot support this merger because I truly believe it would be a missed opportunity to promote greatness among the communities and become a source of hope for improving education for both student bodies while preserving the identities of these two great school districts. As I stated previously, I believe I must be faithful to my oath. Article one, section two of the Pennsylvania Constitution states, "All power is inherent in the people and the free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, their safety, and their happiness." And in Article three, section four, "We are charged as school board members to be co-partners with the state to provide for the thorough and efficient education of those who live within our boundaries." If, if mergers save monies and did reduce educational opportunities, there would be lots more of them. Facts prove otherwise. As a member of this board who must teach, to the oath she swore to uphold in good conscience, I cannot justify a oath for a merger, a merger when confronted with a research in this matter. I research, I research these things. It, it's, it's debunked that the concepts that mergers save money while maintaining or improving educational outcomes for all is just not so. Research proves that class size matters. Research proves that the most important in a person's life as a child, as a child, is the educational experience of a teacher. Research proves that what a board chooses to lead, what, what a board chooses to lead its district will have very important consequences for the teachers and the students in those who do these districts. Research proves that the greatest growth in learning is between birth and five years of age. Research proves that most children who live in poverty have opportunity gaps which translate into educational gaps which are caused by the growing income gap. This income ba, gap is the direct result of laws passed by local, state, and national health programs, so-called, whose serve not the interests of we the people, but the interests of the corporate jungles. I believe as a board, we need to vote no on merger for it would destroy forever a wonderful proud school district. Small school districts have much to offer to the student body, which would be lost if the merger took place. I truly believe that the Antietam School District and the Exeter School District communities have a golden opportunity to come together as one, but as equal partners to identify our strengths, weaknesses, resources, and work together to create, with both districts' students, a better educational experience for all. Let's make this a win-win for our students, our staff, and our communities, and let's stand up for public education. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I would like a roll call vote. A sector poll, poll board, please.
Dr. Bender?
Abstaining.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Mr. Deseer?
No.
Mr. Jupina?
No.
Mrs. Gutcher?
Sadly, no.
Mrs. D?
No.
Mr. Sodder?
No.
Doctor Tamora?
No.
Mr. Quinter?
Eight negative votes, one abstention. Motion carries.
Under letter G, I move that the Exeter Antietam superintendents or their designated representatives collaboratively, collaboratively assess and seek agreement on plan for shared service opportunities to facilitate student-staff utilization of available educational and extracurricular and support opportunities. Transfer pricing will be determined by the district providing the service.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
During the ongoing past months, while we went through the process of discussion of the merger, many were aware, many were not aware that we were actually, but there were four options put forth before our communities by the consultant who presented the document. The first was do nothing, fourth was merger, and second and third were shared services and potentially doing a regionalization of schools. I'd like to comment on, Mrs. Boz commented that she thought I was pushing towards regionalization. I'm not pushing towards it, but I think it's something we shouldn't discount because I don't know if the potential may be there 10 years from now or five years from now. At the same time, I do believe that shared services amongst our district is a very intelligent and smart way to go forward, that being redundant. And the reason is because I think that when you look in both districts, we offer each other some things. First off, there may be a course over at Antietam that some of our students would identify as a potential place they can't go right now for something we have. Secondly, as was very clear, there are a number of AP courses that we have that unfortunately, because of the population at Antietam, not because of the lack of the students' ability they do not have right now. And that is where I think this particular motion comes in play, where we let the superintendents discuss how we can work as neighbors to provide for the best educational system for both groups of students because frankly, we are neighbors and we do play at the same playground, we're the same people. When we look at some of the things such as item 6D tonight, when we're looking at one of our students which will be going back to Antietam to do some services, this is a very good indication of how we work together, as is also the current practices of the number of students who may be participating in our school, our sports. I believe that our students in both school districts offer a lot to each other. Whether in the future we look at things that we don't have, they have, or vice versa, I think we always must keep in mind that everyone should grow, particularly remember that it's always about our children, not just today, but the generations to come. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. President, is there a process that we can go through to get concurrence from the Antietam board that they also are, vote to pursue these collaborative opportunities?
As indicated in the initial study, there's one of the four alternatives, Mike. So, it's no more aligned to agreement and discussion this than was in discussion, Mike.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to suggest, I'm very so proud of the people that I represent, and I would hope that we could maybe get some people in both, not only our community, but in the, in the Antietam School District to work on some of these projects, because it will, people, you know, to come up with ideas of how the Antietam School District can help the Antietam School District and the Antietam School District can help the Exeter School District. I would, I would like, I'd like to see if we could, you know, get people's email addresses or, or if you would be willing to call, you know, call the office and say that, you know, you would be willing to serve with us up committee, because I'm sure it's going to be a lot of work if we get, until we get this right, but I think if we get this right, everybody, it'll be a win-win situation, President, for both districts, because I don't want anyone thinking that they're a stepchild to us because they aren't. They are just as good as any school district in this, in this, in this first name.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. The resolution is that the superintendents coordinate to find opportunities to have shared services and utilization of all the joint opportunities. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes this discussion.
Dr. Bender, first up.
Under personnel, Part A, I move that the board of school directors accept the retiring of the seat of office.
All right, one second. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. All until the, all the way.
Okay, folks, let's not lose that passion, though. I'd like to see you guys vying some other things. You can't talk to talk, yes, walk the walk.
Any discussion? We're considering, I need, the retirements. All in favor, please indicate so, the retirement list, please indicate so by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors accept the following race of nations listed under Part B, number one, certificate of staff, and number two, support staff.
Motion is second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, resume, presentation is next.
I move the board of school directors approve or ratify the following appointments listed under Part C, number one, certificate staff, and number two, A, certi, certificated substitute teachers.
Motion is second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the appointments in paragraph one and two A, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the list of guest teachers listed under Part Two, Letter B.
Motion is second, discussion? All in favor of appointing guest teachers, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a show audience, please, is that, is that two? Okay, we have six in favor, two, no. Motion carries.
I approve, I recommend that the board of school directors approve the following appointments listed under Part C, number three, support staff, number four, extracurricular staff, and our addendum, our administrative staff.
Motion is second, any discussion? Is that a discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the appointments as listed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I understand that Elena Panzer, our new assistant business manager, is here tonight. She could stand and recognize her. Thank you, welcome. I move the board of school directors approve the following staff conferences listed under Part D, and that will be one through 20 on the main agenda and number 21 on the addendum.
We have a second. Motion is second, discussion?
I would request that we look at item number 21 separately or if we can, at least cover larger things, to watch where the locations of the particular conference.
It is in New Cumberland, Pennsylvania. I don't know. Near Harrison.
But it's only a one-day conference, correct?
Correct. Um, hold, hold on a second. I'm reading it here. Jim, I'm guessing that it may start at 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning, so she's coming the night before.
I just, I just don't see.
That would be my guess. The room cost is $120.
But if it starts at 7:30 or 8 o'clock, it's an hour and a half to the max, I guess.
I, I don't, I don't feel very long, or like somebody before, I, I have to acquire one of these things. It's on now, we, we just got this today. It's on tonight, it was before, next morning.
It's on tonight, and it was before, next morning.
Glad to be here, Michael Bell.
I'm not questioning the conference, it's just the fact that if they have a reason to be there the night before for pre-activities, it makes sense, but if it's something that's only a one day and it's near Harrisburg, that's where it's coming from, because I can't recall anything. That doesn't seem like a justification if it starts at seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, because frankly, if you get up, you'll still be driving late this time of year, and get there on time.
We won't be meeting prior to the, uh, conference. Uh, can we leave it up to Dr. Martin with her professional judgment? Thank you.
Can we check out Dr. Miller tomorrow? Dr. Miller, uh, he's in charge of council.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we are voting on the conferences as listed with the provision that Dr. Martin will obtain the express of, uh, Ms. Gannis's state overnight. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Mrs. Kutcher, student conference?
Uh, item A, just reporting the following field trips within the sixty-mile radius that have been approved, items one through, um, twenty. Item B, I move that the following field trip, which is beyond the sixty-mile radius, be approved. Item one, Jimmy High School, the, uh, Science of the Year, Senior High, your book staff to, uh, Valtford through E. Can I do that as one group, because we've been before?
I have motion in the second to approve the trips one through two C, two E. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board approve an amendment to the agreement between Mediaic Services of America and the Extratankship School District to extend the contract for the 2014 extended school year from July seventh, 2014, through July thirty-first, 2014.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, I move that the board of directors approve a tuition agreement between Hobbit Learning Academy LLC and the Extratankship School District for special education services for student number one, four, one, three, six, six, beginning March twenty-fifth, 2014, through the remainder of the 2013-14 school year at a cost of three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On the addendum, item A, H, I move that the board of directors approve October fourteenth, 2013, as an active day for professional development in the 2013-14 school year.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of designation of nine eighty-eight, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item I, I move that the board of directors approve a purchase of services agreement between Glen Mills Schools and the Extratankship School District to provide alternative regular and special education services for student number one, five, zero, two, four, one, beginning March fourteenth, 2014, through the remainder of the 2013-14 school year at a cost of one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and fifty cents per day.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the Glen Mills placement, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That finishes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kutcher.
I'll be happy to do whatever I wish.
Colonel, motion due quickly.
Okay. Uh, item A, I move that the board of directors award a credit weight of one-point-one to all students who successfully complete an advanced placement course in accordance with the standards set by the Extratankship School District.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
Um, I'd like to add an amendment to that, perhaps, because, um, we should probably note that this will start in the 2015-16 school year, because the soaring evil has already imprinted, the classes have been chosen for next year, so there's no particular reason not to wait until fifteen, sixteen, as far as I can see.
I, I thought we left that open, so we could incorporate that in the new school year.
For, for the twenty-fourth school year.
Again, you had them open.
But I would, I would like to comment on this following, just to provide some clarification to the gentleman in fourth row that made a comment about challenging. And again, I appreciate the comment, but the individual children that are taking these classes, again, these are advanced placement classes, these are the most stringent classes that any of our children take. So by them not taking the test has nothing whatsoever to do with the class itself. They are going through the entire class, they are taking the test, they are doing all the required work. The only thing that additional test is, is for after the fact, if they get three or three or four above, they are then able to use that for college credits in our state school system. So again, these students are taking everything as far as from string, it's the most stringent classes they can have, so it, as far as that test itself, it's nothing more than getting the additional college credits, it has nothing to do with the test or the class itself.
Uh, I would be voting against this, uh, this motion, because I do feel as if, um, this, uh, business of saying, um, well, you can take the class, but if, if you get a sixty, that's passing, and therefore, um, you get a one-point-one. I, I don't want to see our educational system being dumbed down, I want to see our standards, uh, you know, being, you know, higher. And yes, I know Dr. Martin said that, uh, we have all good students that go in there, but some people do gain the system, and, you know, just to get a one-point-one, just because they took a test, or they just, they took the course and didn't work on it, I, I mean, I think it's not, not acceptable. So, uh, as, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kutcher, uh, said last, uh, week, we were one of four-hundred-and-seventy-seven districts in the United States and Canada that was recognized by the AP, um, Board for our excellence in having more students get into these AP courses and being either a three, a four, or a five. Now, this is an international, national, and, and, uh, state, uh, recognition. It, it's, it's, it's very well-known, uh, to the, to those that go to college. We want to encourage anyone, whether they're, you know, don't have the ability to pay, as someone said, you know, we have a lot of people in here that would maybe have put foundation that they could, you know, get, get these, get the test, and get, you know, driven to the place where they have to take the test. So I, I, I think we should keep our standards up, and, you know, over that. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I do not agree with this motion as put forth at this time, because I believe that the effort that goes forth with preparing for AP exam is something beyond just something in the classroom, where a student has to put extra effort into making sure they review all the material and align themselves with everything that's required for a test, including doing all their pre-testing that goes with this. If a student chooses not to take the test, it's their option, and at that point, they're still worried the one-point-zero-five, which goes for any honors course at that level. But to take the next level, to put yourself forth into more of a competitive environment, and then to put yourself into a grading that's more of a standardized testing, which would truly prove whether you did absorb the material, I think is justified with one-point-one. There are students who only take honors courses because that's all we offer, for example, at the statistics level, but then go on to take the AP test, they do not turn around and ask for a one-point-one, because that's the rule, they get a one-point-zero-five. I've seen that at my own house, I've had a student that's done that, and done very well on that test. At the same time, they're told that's the rules, you know, going on, in. So, at this time, I don't think it's right to go and to take a system that's been in place, to give credit to a student who takes time out of their schedule, puts more effort, though I'm not saying the effort in the classroom is not there, I'm saying it's above and beyond, and that's why we award the point-zero-five extra. Thank you.
I would be voting against this motion. I've stated I would not repeat my arguments, but I would like to make a comment. I hope that every Exeter student who has a teacher who believes the student can be successful in an AP course chooses to enroll in the course, and I hope that every student who takes an AP course will accept the challenge of taking the AP exam, because only by taking the AP exam can that student know exactly how much he or she has learned compared to every other student taking an AP course in the United States and Canada. I will only add that I would hope that the teacher who has sufficient faith in the student's ability to recommend taking the AP test, the student's AP teacher, the Extratankship School District administration, and finally, the school board itself would similarly value that information. I thank the teachers and the participating students for their achievement, which earned our high school a place along with four-hundred-and-seventy-six high schools in the United States and Canada on the College Board Fourth Annual Honor Rule. I admire their dedication and their effort. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, uh, my, uh, my issues with the AP test are twofold. Let me first tell you what they do not suggest. It suggests nothing about whether or not is, the test is of potential value to the student in furthering their education with a public or maybe a private college or university. Um, it also, in my opinion, um, is, in part, an issue of an outside organization preparing this exam and administering this exam. The issue that I have is that I think it requires a special fee to be placed on students who are in these AP classes simply to validate their work within the Exeter schools, and I would ask any sort of special fees, uh, or levies on any students, um, especially when these test results many times are not known to the school district. Lastly, it's an issue of the freedom of choice for the parents and the students. Instead of this board and this board's policy mandating that a student in the AP course take the AP test, I want to push that decision back to where it belongs, to the student and to the parents.
Any further discussion? I would like a roll call vote. Secretary, a yes vote will relieve the student of responsibility to get the, uh, test, the AP test, uh, for one-point-one, and no vote will maintain this status quo. Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Benson?
No.
Mr. Brayley?
No.
Uh, Mr. Tepina?
No.
Mrs. Kutcher?
No.
Mrs. Asia?
No.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Dr. Tamora?
Yes.
Mr. Quinter?
No.
That is a six-to-two. Six-two against the opposition, and therefore fails.
I'm sorry. Um, Curriculum Committee, uh, reporting that the following proposed textbooks for purchase for the 2014-15 school term will be available for review for thirty days in the Administration Building.
That would be Investigations in Number Data, Space, Core Connections One and Core Connections Two and Three, Algebra Connection, uh, which is a college, uh, textbook. These textbooks are on display for review at the Extratankship School District Building, two-hundred Elm Street, um, ready. Next, Curriculum Committee meeting will be made at six, at six-thirty in the Administration Building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kutcher. Take now, Mr. Quinter.
Thank you, Mr. Quinter. Just want to give a quick update for those of you in the audience who have incoming freshmen in the next school year. The district is contemplating the start of one-to-one computer program. I urge you to go out to the district's website and find more information about that program.
Thanks, sir. BCIU, uh, the only one here doing noteworthy today, or Thursday, uh, they're pressing the school boards of the county to, uh, to claim to the state of necessity, straighten out the excess funding for, uh, medical services provided in school, but, uh, has been, uh, competed the last two years. I think it's cost the IU around a million dollars so far, and, uh, we all share in those funding, so, uh, we might consider that for some future meeting. I'd like to meet, Mrs. Stone.
Uh, just to give some updates on the spring sports season, uh, just some results, the tennis team is nine-and-one, uh, our number-one player was scoring for that, that match. Uh, the boys lacrosse is five-and-five, the girls lacrosse, nine-and-zero, and for another county championship. Uh, baseball team's five-and-three, including a sixteen-inning win the other day, so I'm not sure, I think Mr. Legaf may have had a pitch, uh, the last inning. Uh, the girls softball team's at five-and-three, including an upset win over the last Friday. And the boys volleyball team is six-and-one, so next, uh, at the next meeting, I'll be able to give the end of, the end of the season report.
Thank you, sir. Julie, still got your, uh, township liaison?
And I'm still not liaising, Bob.
Okay. We are liaising with the township. Uh, they're going to take a look at the part of the situation outside the, uh, high school as per the recommendation of the, uh, student forum. Steering Committee continues to, uh, work on potential, uh, means of inviting... The steering committee, uh, the township steering committee continues to work on the opportunities to attract, uh, tax-paying businesses into the township. Pupbridge, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, I'd just like to remind, according to everyone in the audience tonight, that there is a rest-releasing schedule for, 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 uh, two weeks from tonight, April twenty-ninth, in Senior High, at four, at seven o'clock. Typically, it's an opportunity for public to come forward and ask any questions, and maybe, um, they would like to step out. So that's two weeks from tonight, in Senior High, at four. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Duzinger is not here, and we don't have all the tenants, BCTC. We'll defer that facilities, Mr. Breger.
Next facilities committee meeting will be held next Wednesday evening at Bus Facility. We will be discussing the letters of interest that were delivered to us by various architectural firms regarding the proposed bus park facility that will be placed at the water creek. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Audit ready, Mr. Stone?
Uh, very happy to report that, uh, on this audit, report from the Pennsylvania Department of the Auditor General, they conducted a performance audit of our school district. The audit scope covered the period of June twenty-fourth, two thousand and ten... The audit scope covered the period of June twenty-four, 2010 through June twenty-seven, 2013. The audit found that the district complied in all significant respects with certain relevant state laws, regulations, contracts, grant requirements, administrative procedures, and they report that there are no findings or observations in the report. And also, in the audit released on December ninth, 2010, they found that the district had taken the appropriate corrective action for any issues that were noted prior to that. Just want to congratulate Dr. Martin, our team, the Transportation Department, the Technology Department, the Accounting and the HR Department, especially him and his team, so thank you very much for excellent reporting.
Thank you, sir. This is a payment request.
I love sitting aside, Mr. Stahl. I want to approve, have the board approve the payment request on XIX, but someone asked in the audience about these mandates. Well, I just wanted to show you some mandates that we have here. We have learning support professional services, which we have to, you know, when we have our special needs students, we must provide them, and I guess that one, and that's a state, that's a state requirement, but the state, it says zero amount of dollars to all these learning supports, so sixty-three thousand, seven-hundred dollars there to that. And once again, charter schools, there are charter schools that, you know, people send their children to charter schools, and unfortunately, we local taxpayers picked up the whole amount, and in this month's budget, it was one-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars. So there are some mandates that are on the budget. Please approve them because we must pay our bills.
Have motion second, any further discussion? On favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Voted aye. Motion carries. Superintendent's report, Dr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Quinter. I had the opportunity on Saturday night to attend the musical production of Footloose over at the high school, and that was really awesome. The kids did a remarkable job, and it was just really amazing. I absolutely loved it, and I was very proud of them, and I was really proud to be the superintendent of such a wonderful school district. It was really exciting. And speaking of end-of-the-year events, we have a lot coming up at all of our schools. We have concerts, we have art shows, we have all kinds of things, happy things, things that show what our kids have learned, things that show how our kids perform before an audience, and, you know, kids that show the culmination of all the hard work that they and their teachers have done. So please, to our board members and our audience and everybody else in Exeter, come on and see some of those. In the district calendar, you can see where they are marked, and we welcome you to attend any and all of those. Our kids do great work, and so do our teachers, and at the end of the year is a great time to celebrate all that work. For our board members, the annual convention, Board of School Directors Convention will be held this year, I believe you have it in your packet, on the first of May, which is a Thursday evening, I believe. Dr. Carolyn Dumarest, Secretary of Education, will be the guest speaker, and it will be held in the Governor Mifflin School District at their intermediate school, which is a facility that's only a few years old. I think it may have opened the year before, Watan Creek, I'm not quite sure of the timetable. I think it was probably about three years ago. Anyway, you have the information, and I believe that you can register through Donna, my secretary, and you should do so before April twenty-second because they need to know account. So we hope to see you all there this evening, or that evening, on May first. And that is the end of my report.
Ma'am, are there any other matters to come to report?
Mr. President, I would just like to thank the school district and the administration for all the work they did over the last year and a half on this process. It was a tremendous amount of work, and it was very good work, and I appreciate the effort of Dr. Martin, Dr. Davies, and Dr. Ish. Now, if I could, just to show a hands in the audience, how many people just sat through their very first full school board meeting? Thank you for coming, don't make it your last.
Any further discussion? I have motion for a second. Your turn.